Please, 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 to ask Commissioner Director Lee, 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 Lee.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, Mayor, head. Heavenly fathers, we gather here today, help us commissioners make the proper decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us be ever mindful of your word. Help bless the people gathered here today for the important business of our city. Bless our wonderful staff, and God bless our troops that protect our freedoms every day through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I now call this special meeting the Fourth Things City Commission Order. Uh, Mr. Attorney, you gonna lead off?
Uh, yes, Mayor. At last, the last regular city commission meeting on December 5th, last Tuesday, um, the city commission asked me to obtain an attorney general opinion. Um, I did request that opinion, and it was sent back to me, I believe it was on Monday. And the opinion is, basically, that the Attorney General's office does not give interpretations of local ordinances, rules, and charters. They state that that is the province of the attorney for the governmental agency in question.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm the one that made that motion to ask for that attorney general opinion. Um, appears that we're not gonna get one. Um, but... I just wanna say this. Um, I'm gonna direct this to you, Commissioner Thursby. I've been on this board for about a year and a half, and over the last two months have been put through, chastised about a lot of things. We've seen it in the papers, on television, regarding this, you know, community and your issue, and what, what you personally did. Um, and... Staff have also taken the heat. Our families have taken the heat. Um, and I, I don't wanna kick a dog while he's down, 'cause I know you're down. Um, but I do wanna follow charter, and, and I'm gonna ask for you to remove yourself from office, based on the charter. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to that?
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Uh... When all this took place, I prayed about it, I thought about it a lot, what to do. I figured everybody in this town hated me, was mad at me, and I've let a lot of people down. But the first week, to ten days after this all took place, the mail lady had to take a rubber band, and rubber band the door closed to my mailbox with letters. They sat there, 'cause of, for a day before I ever opened one, 'cause I was scared to death what was gonna be in them. Out of every letter I got, and I didn't count them all, but I could fill up this table with them, in cards. I got one bad one. That doesn't mean that's the only person I let down. But each and every one were people that I know, that I knocked on their, their door, that I've known my whole life. And they let me know how disappointed they were. But they also let me know how proud they were of the job that I've done over the past five and a half, five years. So, this isn't about me. This isn't about anything to me, but the people, the community, my supporters. So, I'm gonna take the stance that I'm not gonna step down. I'm gonna hang in there until such time, if, if possible, and let the people decide when I come up for reelection. I apologize to the people and to this board the other night, and I'll apologize again to you, each and every one of you, staff, people in the audience, people that's not here. One of the biggest mistakes ever made in my life, and I'm sorry. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I'll let the mayor, now, I'm sure also, uh, make a few, sheer comments. And, uh, it'll also be directed toward, toward William. And, uh, William, you've been a very good commissioner. I've been here a long time, you've been a good commissioner. You made a mistake. Everybody makes mistakes. Unfortunately, the mistake you made was a violation of our charter. And by your actions of, of last Wednesday, uh, your seat on the commission has been forfeited. Now, you said it right, it's not about you. I don't dislike you, but what I do dislike is going against the oath I took to uphold the city charter. And, uh, that's, that's just what I'm gonna have to do. And, uh, as painful as it is, uh, it's, it's the right thing to do.
And I, I'll agree with what everybody said here today, you know, including William. He's done a fantastic job. You know, I always thought of him as, as voting what he felt was best for the people. But part of being a commissioner is upholding the values that our founders set forth in that document. You know, people have told me, well, that document is old. So is the Constitution of the United States. We still have to follow that. Um, you know, I'm with both y'all. I'm gonna have to go along with the charter with this, and I think the purpose today is to decide whether we accept our attorney's opinion, as the, as the Attorney General's office has said. It is his interpretation that we either adopt or don't. And that's where I stand today.
All right. And, and as I've stated before, you know, the only problem I have with the charter is what it does say, a crime. It says a crime. Now, that could mean a lot of things could happen, that are very small things, that either one of us guys up here will lose our seat, because we may commit a small crime. And I'm not condoning anything that Commissioner Thursby did at all. I don't condone it at all. But as I said before, we all make mistakes, and, uh, interpreting the charter is, to me, is not easy. It's not clear-cut. When it says crime, just doesn't seem clear-cut to me when it says crime. If you did like the cameo to state and specify felony or misdemeanor, then that would be a different story. But it doesn't say either. It just says a crime. And, and I think that's vague and ambiguous. I've had about three different attorneys tell me that. It's vague and ambiguous. Ambiguous means unclear. I looked it up in the dictionary, so I'd be sure enough. But, uh, anyway, that's where I stand on it, and, uh... Now, it's gonna take a vote to remove him?
It, my opinion is that when he was convicted of a crime, DUI with property damage, Commissioner Thursby forfeited his seat as a city commissioner of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by operation of the law.
Mr. Mayor, from what, the way I see it, and, and, and I've made my decision on this, the way I see it, he forfeits his office. Uh, and, that's it.
I'll, I'll, uh, and, and that's basically your opinion of our last meeting, uh, Mr. Cahill, uh, your opinion of what charter says. I know that you've reached out to other attorneys also, which is agreed with you. You've, you've been very professional in, in, uh, in the whole process, so I, I'm gonna make a motion that, that we approve, uh, the opinion of our attorney on this matter of the charter. Okay, well, motion inclusion was there?
Second.
Second, permission to ask for another discussion of the board?
I'd like to discuss.
Go ahead.
I don't think it requires a motion or a second for him to be removed. I, I believe, the way I see it, he forfeits his office, and it, it is what it is. Um, I didn't come here prepared to vote to remove him. I came here to ask Commissioner Thursby to remove himself from office, based on what the charter said. That's where I stand.
My motion was, was not to remove him. My motion was only to approve the opinion of the attorney. That, that was my motion. And, uh, so, it, it really hasn't... You know, I don't know, this is uncharted waters for us. I, I don't, I don't know, uh, if, if we approve his opinion. Uh, is it, is it, who is, it's up to Commissioner Thursby, the way I think, uh, or I don't know if it's a demand.
See, and, and that's, that's the vagueness in it. We, we're, we think, and we're not sure.
Yeah, well...
And we need to be extremely careful. But, but I agree, he needs to be, he needs to remove himself.
Yeah, but, but the motion is only to approve the opinion of, that our attorney presented to us at last meeting and, and today. So, I...
I would agree with that, based off the Attorney General's saying that his opinion is the opinion that we need to seek. Because of that letter from the AG.
Right. All right. Any further discussion?
Second, I, I just, I wanna express that I did not come here to vote for him to, to remove him from office. I came here to ask him to forfeit his seat. Uh, it seems like he's not. Um... What do I think will come next? I don't know. Um...
It's really, I don't think it's for us to decide.
Well, and, and I believe it's not for us to even be voted, to vote him. He simply removes himself, the way I see it.
What is our attorney's opinion on that? On, do we have to vote on this?
I, I think you accepting my opinion is what, is what, if that's what you agree with, that's what you should do. Still, my opinion that Mr. Thursby forfeited his office last Wednesday, when he pled no contest to DUI with property damage.
And my concern, gentlemen, is, is simple. You know, if that's the case, and if we do accept the opinion, uh, there's another provision in our charter that allows us ten days to make our own decision on, on a replacement. Otherwise, it's up to the governor, and we know how fast he makes his picks. You know, it could move into next year, and if that's the case, this appointee will be here for a full calendar year, if it goes past the time for qualifying.
Absolutely right. You, the governor don't make quick decisions. Um, and I, I do realize that it, it could be a long time, but, um, I, I would guess certainly this board was gonna pick, you know, the replacement.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, uh, Mr. Attorney. Flip-flop this thing a little bit. If, if, if a motion is not made to deny it, your opinion is what your opinion is, I don't, I don't see a need to affirm your opinion. You gave it, you're our paid attorney, that's what your opinion is, unless a motion is made to, to deny or refute your opinion, then...
It's a matter of record. When he said it, it's a matter of record, public record.
That is my, my thought. She said it's just an opinion. We know what opinion is. But anyway, that's... How do you feel about that?
I think that Commissioner Thursby forfeited his office, and I think that if you got, if the commission wants to be in charge of appointing the next commissioner to take his place, that's what you need to be dealing with now.
Okay. Well, I can withdraw my motion then.
Oh, withdraw my second. So I guess then the next issue at hand is that appointment. How do we deal with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Until such time that I can seek some more legal advice over this, I'm gonna excuse myself from this meeting. Uh, if it does work out to where I'm kicked off, I'll be out knocking on doors again in about a year and a half, and maybe next time.
Five, five months.
Five months.
June.
And I, I could even maybe sit beside both, if I wait for the right time.
All right, Commissioner. You're excused.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I guess our next step is we need to have a process to, to find a replacement. We, we can do that when we've got three more days?
Yeah, I think it's Saturday.
It's Saturday is the, is the last day.
So, what, what is your thoughts, with pleasure, the board, or what?
Well, I mean, do we have names that we can toss out for consideration, or do we wanna call another meeting for Friday?
I've got, I've got a name. I've, actually, I've had about four people, four people throw, uh, say that they, two of them said they would, uh, uh, only serve out the term and not seek reelection, and, uh, the other two, I assume, would. But two said that they would just like to serve out the term, which ended June, and, uh, that they would not... Uh, nineteen. Huh? The end of June of nineteen?
Right.
No, no, and I think the charter says, the very next election.
Election.
Or not, it's full-time, correct?
The next elec, the next election.
And then at that time, we'd have to have a one-year term to get the sequence, the three-two sequence back.
Get it back to where it was supposed to be.
So, uh, so basically, it's a five-month term for somebody. Uh, and, uh, you know, Mr. Thursby run at that time, if he so desires.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, uh, but I've, I've got some name, I, I've put out some name, we gotta just figure out how we're gonna, how, I mean, we gotta vote, of course. And, uh, you wanna do that today, or you wanna, I mean, time? I would like to put, maybe put some names out, and then have another meeting to decide. Have another meeting either tomorrow or Friday. I'm fine, you can continue it to tomorrow.
We could all contact staff with names, and put a slate right in front of us to look at for Friday.
You want it Friday or tomorrow?
Uh, probably tomorrow, actually.
I would prefer Friday. I have court pretty much all day tomorrow.
Okay. Friday at?
What time? I guess noon. That'll give us till five to get it figured out.
What about noon? That's fine. Okay. So, with that, presenting names to staff, so, and then we'll have it on the agenda. At noon? Friday. All right. Just to, uh, did you need to read anything else clean, or you, you're done?
No, it's unless you have a question for me.
All right, uh, at this time, well, ask, do any citizens wish to be heard? Any citizens wish to be heard?
It is sad. I did support William when he first ran. He was, worked the campaign. I contributed to his fund when he was sick. I contributed to that. Um, many of us did. It's, it's very disappointing. Um, Mayor, you talk about a crime, and the thing is, drunk driving is the number-one cause of deaths on the roadway. So, it isn't equated to, you know, spitting on the sidewalk, or catching a, a fish out of season. It's the number-one killer on our roadways. And Mothers Against Drunk Driving have worked tirelessly and hard to make sure that our teens, because a lot of them are killed in drunk driving. I know I had a friend killed in that manner, and it's still very upsetting. But we have to take this seriously, because Mr. Thursby drove in a school zone on a bike path after an open container workshop, and he was intoxicated, and he pleaded guilty. That's very serious, and we, by the grace of God, no one was hurt. And I think we also need to think about our law enforcement, and what this has meant to them. And we really need to thank our chief for doing such a great job. It could've gone a lot of different ways, but he did his job, as did our other law enforcement. So, I just think this is something that, as sad as it is, it's, it's about consequences and accountability and a crime. Thank you.
That's it. Anyone else? Come on up. Let me just state your name.
Okay, my name's David Alvarez. I live at 307 12th Street. And I think, just to wrap this up, uh, I just think it ought to go on the record that, you know, by ex-commissioner Thursby leaving, that, you know, he has forfeited his seat. So I just think that somehow or another, it needs to be in writing or stated that he has forfeited his seat. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Good morning. Steve Womack, was at the last meeting, a full-time resident here. Um, you know, what's gonna happen on the next regular meeting, or on Friday at noon, when Mr. Thursby shows back up? I mean, I know that if, if a citizen, if I came up and sat in that chair, the chief would probably remove me. So I think somebody needs to think through, uh, the actions of what's going on for the next meeting to avoid those kinds of conflicts. Mr. Mayor, I'm an Army guy, twenty-eight years, so my world revolves around leadership. And I really, in my heart of hearts, feel like you failed in the leadership department. Although you supported a fellow commissioner in public, and I totally appreciate that, I can only imagine what the chief was thinking, when you're talking about ambiguous. A lot of that wording is put in there so that people can make adult decisions, right? So that when it is an illegal fish, and that's wrong, that the lawyer and you can have that leeway to make those decisions. But equating all that, as Christie said, that was really a leadership failure. We're not looking for the minimum expectations from you. We're, we're looking for the highest expectations. I think the expectations went up about three hundred percent just a couple of months ago. When you voted a raise, and now something like this happens, and you're defending him, it's, it's just wrong. I feel bad for the chief. I feel bad for the staff. If this was any other employee, 'cause we haven't really addressed the, uh, what I would call drunk-on-duty, right? When people are making impaired decisions for us in public, got it. After the meeting, what about the meeting? What about the county handbook? What about if anyone else shows up drunk on their job? Do they get a vote? Do they get a second chance? Speaking of second chances, I think Mr. Thursby expelled a lot of second chances a few years ago, because this wasn't the first. This wasn't the second. Finally, I would truly reflect on what your values and your standards of conduct are, sir. And if this is what's acceptable to you, then, you know, you might wanna resign also. Because I just don't, I don't see that anything that you said in public is reasonable or prudent, and is in the best interest of the public. Again, not a personal attack. When you had the last word last week, you used the words "love not hate" and "Christian ethic." And me personally, I felt like that was an attack against me. All I had said to Mr. Thir, all I had said to Mr. Thursby was, "Your distraction, your personal conduct and behavior has become a burden on the board." And you closed with questioning my Christianity. So, I would really, uh, think about what you're saying to people in public, because I don't know how you took it, but when I read it in the paper the next day, or a couple of days later, really? Thank you, sir.
You must be very vain of having nothing to do with you. I'll tell you that personally, having nothing to do with you.
Yes, sir.
Nothing you said that night. Well, I said it had nothing to do with that. I promise you that.
Well...
It was my leadership.
Yes, sir.
I understand what you're saying, but I guarantee I can blame you. Lots of people in here have liked my leadership. Lots of people. So, you're one person, and I'm one person.
Yes, sir.
And I, I appreciate you coming up here, I really do. I'm not angry with you or nothing. I'm just telling you how I feel about my leadership.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll work on my other failures. Thank you.
You don't have to work on anything for me, 'cause I don't think you had a favor. It's you saying that, not me. I never said that. Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Speaker, how are you? Teresa Thursby. I am the wife of the commissioner. I was not even coming to this meeting. One, I didn't know about it until the last minute. But two, I wasn't coming here because I don't condone what William did. As Christie said, my mother was killed by a drunk driver. So do I think it's okay to be driving and drinking? No. Do I think what he did was wrong? Yes. But does that make him the evil person that everybody is making him out to be? Does that take away all the good he has done while he sat on that seat? I'm not here for you to vote him back in, or to keep him. I couldn't care less. I can promise you that. Because I can tell you that through this process, he has learned who his real friends are, and who his real friends are not. He has learned the people he has helped are nothing but backstabbers. He has learned who he can count on, and who he cannot count on. So regardless of what decision y'all make, I don't care. But the one thing I do want to be known, by you and by all the people out here that are here against him, I couldn't care less if you are here against him. You have your own opinion. But I have been married to him for twenty-five years. Is he perfect? No. Has our marriage been perfect? No. But he's a good man. He's made mistakes just like everybody else. I know one commissioner sitting on that board right now that had a DUI before he was elected. Does that make him a bad man? I know several people sitting in this audience that come sit at the restaurant that I work at, and drink, and drink, and drink, but then they leave and get in their car and drive off. They could get a DUI too. What he did is nothing more than what anybody else here has done. And I just want everybody to know that. Like I said, I'm not here for him. I'm not here for you guys. I'm here for me. He's been in office how many years? Five? And he did a lot of good things while he was in office. So for all you people who hate him, and whatever your feelings are, that's fine. He did wrong. He made a mistake, but he also did good. And for you people sitting up there, pointing your fingers and casting judgment when you do the same thing, you just haven't been caught. Shame on you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the board? You've already been up.
Yeah.
Well, I'd love to recognize this man first.
That's fine.
Come on up.
My name's, uh, Rob Lucaccio, and first of all, I'd like to say thank you for following your charter. Uh, the next thing I ask that you consider is, uh, the replacement. Um, not to be, uh, a process that we're gonna do in a few days by, uh, pulling names out of a hat and voting on them. I think, um, that does not represent the electorate of Port St. Joe. Uh, what I would, um, just make as a suggestion is you just kind of, uh, follow either, one, the next election cycle, or an appointment by the governor. That's all. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not... Someone else? Come on up.
Barbara Radcliffe. Um, I had other remarks to say, but, uh, they are no longer necessary. But I would like to try to make a distinction between hating someone and doing the right thing. I don't hate William Thursby, and I don't think probably anybody in this room hates William Thursby. But there are consequences to our actions. In my opinion, part of the reason that our country is in the shape it's in today is there have been far too few consequences imposed on people. It's okay to do whatever makes you feel good, as long as you don't get caught. And that's what happened. Mr. Thursby got caught. And now there should be consequences. I agree with Mr. Cahill's decision. I agree with Mr. Cahill's decision, there's no ambiguity in the charter. And Bo, you know DUI is a crime.
I didn't say it was, I didn't say it was, I said I don't tend to, what did you say?
But you, but you're mocking the word. A crime is spitting on the street, a crime is a fish out of season, what is a crime?
They're all crimes.
They are, and this is the most serious that you can come up with.
I agree, I agree, I don't argue with you at that point.
So my point is, the right thing has been done with Mr. Thursby being gone. It has to do with doing the right thing, not hating someone. And I would just like that to be on the record. Nobody is punishing Mr. Thursby, he brought this on himself. And you, you invoked the name of Jesus last meeting. In my religion, yes, asking forgiveness, repenting are important, but penance comes with it too. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else, come on up.
Just a few things, I just seriously hope you not consider changing the law that eliminated him from this board.
We can't do it without the...
I understand that, but I just wanted you to understand that we hold all of you to a higher standard, we expect that, and you need to know that going in here if you're gonna be a councilman. You can't do something like that and not expect some ramifications. In the real world, if he shows up to work drunk where I worked at, and I worked at five Fortune 500 companies, we fired you right then and there, push you in a cab, you're done. There is no second chance, that's how it is in the real world. You guys need to understand that, that we, we understand it, he's a nice guy, he made a mistake, but life is tough. So, it is what it is, keep that rule the way it is. We hold you to a higher standard, stay that way. Life's good.
That was my...
All right, thanks.
Mayor, I did not get a name?
The name, Mr. Mayor, if you can give the name.
I did not get the speaker's name.
Sir, could you tell your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record?
Oh, Keith Crossman.
Can you get it?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I really didn't wanna go here, but this isn't about hate. But when you speak on subjects like this, you also get backlash. And, you know, Ms. Thursby, I appreciate her commitment to her marriage and her husband, but that does not give her a right to threaten me in the form of a text. And I had to have a police officer come to my house, and I had to file this report because she threatened me.
You are ridiculous if you consider what I put in our board.
I'm going to put this in the record, and everyone else can make their own decision, Mayor, with all respect.
And I'll just say one more thing, and I'm pretty saying, you know, if it wasn't the way I thought it was written, that says a crime, it was like the counties and like the states, it was specified what crime, either a misdemeanor or felony. And the county and the state, it's a felony. I understand our charter says it's a crime, and if that's what we got to live by, that's what we got to live by. But what I see is not unlevel. Other places, we've got two guys in the House of Representatives right now that's got DUIs, but they haven't had to relinquish their position, but they've been kicked off a few committees, but they have not had to relinquish their seat right today. There's other people in other places doing the same thing.
They don't represent us.
And that's what I said, start with, I, I know us, is the way I thought it was written, I understand that. But I'd also want everybody to understand that our charter probably is one of the only ones that says that. But it's, it's what it is, it says that, that's what it says. I'm not just, just speaking that at all. Anyone else in the board? All right, where you going?